And with that, we're off to the races. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Podscro School Board to order. This is the second meeting in May for the Podscro School Board. And we'll go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Parker, if you'd like to raise up the flag, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic, for which it stands one day. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So 28, so that means this Custer, the roll call, we'll get the rolls sorted out. I think we should have everybody here. I'm not sure if Mr. Parker's here, but we'll get the screenshots as we've been doing, and we'll get all sorted that way. Executive session announcement, we have not had an executive session since last time, so there was no executive session to announce for this meeting. Public comment and looking at the screen, I see no questions so far, nothing in the chat, so I think we're good to go. Does anybody have any questions on the agenda for this evening that they would like to ask at this time? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead with the report of the superintendent and discussion items, 4.1, Dr. Schirr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Maybe we wanted to, or tonight we wanted to bring this discussion item, the web advertising component, as we move forward with our new website. One of the things that we wanted to do was really give ourselves an opportunity to make revenue from the standpoint of the upgrades to the website could possibly pay for themselves. So as you can see from your agenda, the Co-Curricular Committee recommended Edge Click Advertising to represent the district in a 50-50 profit share. To place a single banner, regional advertising banner on the Podscro website. The district has a full right of refusal for any advertisement that may not philosophically be aligned to our mission. So tonight, what we wanted to do is give the board an opportunity to discuss it. And I also wanted to ask anybody, board members from the co-curricular, as well as Mr. Drenzo, Dr. Harney, et cetera. We just want to give everybody an opportunity to ask questions because we feel it's something we'd want to recommend to the board, but we wanted to first have you have the opportunity to talk about it. Mr. Drenzo, would you like to add on how this got to the committee?
Sure, we had a brief discussion about it at an earlier meeting, just as part of our minutes. But really, this is just an opportunity to basically stay aligned with our philosophy right now with, you know, single sourced and not overpowering advertising. It's a single banner advertiser. And I did provide some examples at the last meeting. Perk Valley would be the closest one. And again, it's more of a regional type of company. So, you know, again, the dollars are a little bit bigger. So that's really why the company Edge Click goes after a little bit larger-based businesses. That does not mean, though, that a small local company could not be a part of it. So again, one of the biggest pieces of it for us is it's 50-50 split. There's no dollars that, you know, that we put into it at all. And we have the right to refuse any of them. If there's something that, you know, we're philosophically not aligned with, et cetera, it's a simple no, we would, you know, like to move on. And if there are no advertising, we still, there'd still be a banner there that'll say, you know, for potential advertisers, if you'd like to advertise, please contact Edge Click, et cetera. So the way they looked at it demographically, they felt about a $5,000 revenue, which would be close to half of our share for monitoring and managing our website.
Gary, I have a question. Do you have any idea what the advertising costs are for an advertiser?
I'm not sure of that, the dollar amounts, and I'm not sure they share that with us, so to speak. More of the analytics, they talked about the size of our district, the location of it. And it sounded to me, and again, I'm like hypothesizing a little bit, that I would think that this area is a pretty good spot for them to do business, so to speak. So I think that the number of looks that we get on our advertising make it a pretty good potential client for them. So that's why they kind of, you know, predicted about $5,000 revenue. But I'm not sure exactly what their dollars are as far as what they pull in from each source.
Ashley, I think I saw on their website that they were charging $9 per thousand. I sort of remember stumbling, just stumbling across it by accident, the rate card that they had. But I sort of remember $9 per thousand views.
Oh, per thousand views?
Views, yes.
That's actually really good.
I'm going from memory here, like three, four weeks ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I just know that, you know, in real estate, a lot of people are using the AdWorks and stuff like that. And there's, you know, all kinds of things out there. But that one actually sounds pretty reasonable. So it would be nice to see local advertising on there. I don't know about you guys, but I always get sort of, you know, it just sort of makes me feel good if I, I hate the banners that show up on, you know, like if you're on a website or something, but it makes me feel better if it's a banner from a local store. Like I know for a while I've seen Landis Market pop up. And I was like, oh, I know where that is, you know?
That would be great if that would, you know, that would be great for our community and great for the local businesses. I just, I want to be realistic and upfront that, you know, it might be, you know, it might be, somebody said GEICO, it might be GEICO at some point, so.
No, that's fine. I'm just, I was just saying, it's always nice to see local someone you can, you know, sort of.
Identify with.
Right, thank you.
Actually, if you were to look over, like, some of the ones they had, the Perkyomen right now, you would actually see the banner, how they displayed it, is only on the homepage, and it's only on the individual school pages. So it's not on every page, the little banner. And right now, the ones they have going are Substitute Teacher, Servicing, a couple of colleges, stuff like that.
Good, so it's relevant to the website more than just, you know, you know, the whatever, like you said, GEICO or something like that. So that's cool, all right. Hey, money's money, right?
In a philosophical, as long as we're philosophically aligned, it's much better.
Yeah.
And just to confirm, that was on the homepage? And Al, you said like the individual school page, meaning like the high school page, the middle school page, not individual pages within? If they were looking at a particular teacher's page, or looking for sporting event update or something like that, it would just be just on those main district pages, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's what I saw on Perkyomen, that's how they have it listed right there.
Yes. Good, that way I feel better that's not, you know, too invasive. Thank you.
All right, it sounds like there's no objection to this going on the agenda for the June meeting for action, is that what I'm hearing? Or rather, not hearing?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm amazed.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate that. Moving on to charter school reform resolution, I know this is something that we've discussed as a board over the last several months. And of course, the COVID piece got in our way. So Dr. Nipper, I'd like to turn it over to you. I know you have submitted some resolution to us, for us, and I'd like you to kick this off, if you would.
Okay, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna keep this piece fairly short. I think Mr. Leach sent around a resolution from Ben Salem that landed on my email. And this is one of the more telling things among their list of wheresses. Pennsylvania ranks 44th among the 50 states in the percentage of state subsidies allocated to support elementary and secondary education. And here's the part that is really telling. Pennsylvania state share of public education has declined from 54% in 1971 to 31.7% in 2019. That's a long period of time, and that's more than just our COVID crisis. This is a longstanding trend that has gone on for 50 years. Before there were charter schools, before there was an internet, before there was cyber. So to me, this is the main thrust of dealing with a longstanding issue in funding. And I'm gonna keep my piece fairly short. One last part. I was listening before the meeting to David McCullough, as a historian on C-SPAN. And one of the points that the founders of this country recognized as we are heading towards the Fourth of July is that for a democracy to function, the populace has to be educated. And we're ignoring, as a state, our responsibility. And yeah, this resolution isn't going to change the world, but we have to do something to correct a funding situation which really has persisted for, according to Ben Salem's resolution, and I know because I was around that for 50 years. That's my spiel. And that's about all I'm gonna add about it, and then if somebody else has some questions, but I urge you all to move this thing forward. Thanks.
Dr. Nipper, the only question I had was the differences between number one and number two. Which one are you looking at us possibly signing?
Um, I'm not sure. I printed them out, and I printed them out, and I think both of them were the same. But I may have made a mistake. I may have made a mistake, but when I printed them, I think both were the same, were the same document. I'm gonna ask the president for a ruling. And did I make a mistake when I printed out the two resolutions?
Well, hold on just a minute, because what happened was, the original was the one that was sent in, the one you sent me on Friday was, I believe, the one that you rewrote.
Yeah.
Of Dr. Nipper.
But I didn't see that one.
It's totally different.
I saw the original one, and I didn't see the one I printed out on Friday, but that might have been me making a mistake. I'd rather go with the one on Friday at this point in time.
All right. That should be the number two, then, A2.
That's A2? Okay, then I made a mistake when I was printing them out. Because I got, I got the original one that was submitted, which was a form, form I got from the Legislative Committee.
Right.
And if the one that I submitted isn't there, I'll resend it around.
Well, Dr. Nipper, the one that's the number one, DOCX, that's the one that mentioned the COVID and is very based, the one you gave that says the PDF, that one's very more detailed, has dollar amounts in it, and talks about 1997 and such like that.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that was the original one. The, if the one with COVID on it is up there, that's the one I submitted. I mean, I'll, you know, if you're not happy with either of them, or you're happier with one over the other, I'm open to suggestions.
No, I was just asking which one they wanted, I have no idea.
It's, you know.
Well, as you all know, my opinion on this was simply stated that this was a marker that we were putting down to say that we wanted some sort of reform in the way of funding for charter schools. And the mechanics of what exactly was being done was immaterial. Basically, it's just saying we want something done. Now, like the point that Dr. Nipper was making, this is not exactly on his point. He is right, yes, the founders did want an educated populace. That was key to it, it depended, it depends on an educated populace. We strayed pretty far away from that at this stage. We still depend on that, but we're straying pretty far from that original intent and where we are at the moment. The, so whichever one, one or two that we vote on, the resolution is talking about the charter school funding. As you all know, my personal position is that we ought to be giving the public more choices, not fewer choices. And charter school is a choice that is fine for some people, just as private school is a choice for some people. Not everybody fits into the public school choice, not everybody can afford private schools. Some kids do better in charter schools, everything is an option. I think that the funding for charter schools is woefully, horribly misguided, just as the funding for public schools is woefully misguided at the moment. And they're continuing to punt and not make decisions right now as it is. And I think, Dr. Schirr, are you gonna give us an update on that a little bit later?
Will do.
Yeah, that's great. So we've got a lot of things to talk about. So if you're wondering why this might seem a little bit weird, but we don't know whether we're gonna vote on Resolution 1 or Resolution 2, the fact of the matter is, it doesn't matter too much. We're saying the funding formula is messed up. Let's fix funding for charter schools, let's reform charter schools. So if somebody wants to make a motion, that's fine. If not, we can relook at it and vote on it again in the first meeting in June. So I will take a motion to vote for Resolution 1, Resolution 2, or a motion to table.
Mr. Lindgren, if I could just interject, I think Resolution number two is, has more details.
Yes, it does.
So that, I just wanted to make that clear, clearer to the board, if you're not looking at it right now, that there's more details with number two. But we can surely get this out to the board, you know, side-by-side comparison again. And you can just, you know, have a preliminary look at it and give us some direction so that we can place it again on the, on the June 9th agenda and be ready to go. But number two was definitely more.
One last point. The charter school law was written in the late 1990s. That was, when I was doing research, in the very earliest days of the internet. So cyber charter schools were basically the dream in a few people's eyes. And the piece of what has happened now was literally undreamed of. I was writing grants on this topic, and I felt like I was writing science fiction because we were talking about kinds of education which you're seeing now through Zoom classes that's holding this educational system together. That was not even dreamed of. And some of the earliest research that was done was a little more of what was called at the time, I think, programmed learning, only it was done over the internet, in a network. So the law needs to be revised. And yes, the statement's vague, but the statement's vague because right now, and a key piece of what's going on is how you educate over the internet. And we're all having a crash course in that, parents, teachers, students. And come September, if you think about the Curriculum Committee, come September, we're gonna have our first chance at digesting what was a forced experiment that happened early in March. Do you want to make it specific? I kind of think we need to have elbow room to decide what we're going to do. Because certainly, things like labs are gonna be very difficult right now, but might not be in a few years when you have virtual reality and you can put on a headset and walk around and walk through an environment that looks like the holodeck on Star Trek. So I don't know how specific we can be because state legislatures have an idea to get ossified and frozen in place. And this is a state where we need certain degree of flexibility. It's the end of my thought.
All right, so back to what we said before. So we have an option to approve Resolution 1, which was the original, Option 2, which is more detailed and longer, or table it for next month. Does anybody have a suggestion or a motion?
I motion to table, so we can take an in-depth look at both of them. I read Resolution 2, it seemed to me to be leaning more towards special education. I'm all for, you know, getting, you know, getting something done for this, but I've also been told that it dies in the Senate because the cyber schools have a very strong lobby. Not that I'm saying this is a moot point.
You're correct.
Something's gotta give, though, and I think a lot of schools are gonna be in dire straits, you know, possibly, you know, 2020, 2021 school year, because, you know. You know, anyway, so I motion to table.
Yes.
My only preference to tabling is, we've talked about this probably now for a 3D word message
I would second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Motion tables are privileged.
Is anybody else having trouble with their video?
Can be held, so we have motion and a second. All those in favor of.
Yeah.
Not having trouble now.
Hello?
All those in favor of tabling the motion?
I can hear you, Chuck.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know why you're cutting in and out.
All those opposed to tabling.
I'll say nay, because I just like to.
Okay, by my count, we have the motion carries, the motion is. Okay, we have one nay, and that is.
Always has to be one.
From Mr. Leach. All right, so that'll take us to action items on personnel, section 5, Dr. Schirr.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion. I don't know if I'm on or not. Will you approve all action items personnel? Did anybody hear me with that one?
Second.
5-1, 5-2, 5-3?
Yes.
Second, that motion.
We have a motion and a second to combine items 5, 1, 2, and 3, and that has been seconded, motion made by Mrs. Grimm, and seconded by, I think, Dr. Nipper, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, one comment. We are extending for one year the Dr. Harney's contract automatically because we didn't do it in time. And I will say that we will be revisiting this contract with Dr. Harney. We're gonna have negotiation, we're gonna be revisiting that because that was something that caught up on us because it was, we were in talks to extend that, and we got overcome because it was by the end, it had been done by the end of March. And because we weren't able to have discussions in face, face-to-face because of that, it was overcome by events. So we are going to have discussions, and we are going to fix that thing that was unfortunately extended automatically. So that was through no fault of his own or ours, but kind of by events. So we are going to fix that, Dr. Harney. I apologize to you that we didn't do it on time, as we were supposed to and as we had agreed. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection, 5, 1, 2, and 3.
Okay, moving on to 6.1, the School Board will select a treasurer for the 2021 school year. I turn that over to the Board President.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Grimm for the position of School Board Treasurer for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to close.
So moved.
We have a motion to close and a second. All those in favor of closing the nominations? Say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mrs. Grimm as the Board Treasurer for next year, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection, congratulations, Mrs. Grimm, for another year.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, would you agree to being treasurer for us for another year?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, thank you.
So happy to hear that, thank you very much.
I'll try to, I'll try it again with a none mute. 6.2, the MCU Board of Directors, I'm asking the board, our board, to approve the MCU Board of Directors as presented.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grimm and a second from Mr. Lappick to approve the MCU Board of Directors as presented, basically the ballot there. This, please. Okay. You have a visitor there, Mr. Custer, on your back of your chair.
Really, I hadn't noticed.
Anybody? Does anybody have any questions about the MCU Board? If not, all the.
I would like to just add one thing.
Would you like to add one thing?
Yes.
Too late.
Please.
I was just going to say, we do have, we do have two. Okay, okay, thank you. I'm sorry for the delay. We do have two local, one from Pottstown that's going to be determined. I'm not sure who that'll be. And we have Tom DeBello from Springfield, who also sits on the JOC. So it's good to know that we have some local representation.
Okay. Very good. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify, signify by saying no. So ordered without objection.
No.
No, that's my, that's dog. He's just generally disagreeable.
He must see my cat. And by the way, everybody, this is Stanley.
I like to make a motion to combine six point three, six point seven, unless anybody has any objections.
No, I second that.
I have a question on six point three.
You can ask the question after the, once we get this going.
Yeah.
Unless you're going to vote no.
I don't know.
Pull six point three, six point four to six point seven.
No, you can, he can ask a question and he can vote against, even if it is combined. So we have a motion to combine six, three to six, seven for Mr. Leach. We have a, we have a second from Mr. Lappick. And as I understand it, we have a question from Mr. Parker on six point three. So, Mr. Parker, please go ahead with your.
Thank you. What's the current rate for Susan Cleaver? I see next year is proposed and a year after.
The current rate is $70 an hour.
Thank you. I'll be voting no, just so you know, I don't think this is a time for upping rates five, five dollars in two years.
Understood. All right, does anybody else have any questions on any items in six, three to six, seven? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying no.
No to six point three.
Very good. So ordered with one objection. Okay, action, section seven, please, Dr. Schur.
Yes, the following policies have been reviewed by the Policy Committee and have made available for public. They are now recommended for approval.
I'll second the motion. We didn't.
Well, somebody actually has to make a motion first.
And maybe just double check with Mr. Park and your committee. These are just, again, they are now recommended. That is correct. I want to defer back to Mr. Parker just to double check.
Sorry, is muted. That is correct. These three policies have gone through thirty day review and they're ready to go. So I don't believe it's been done. I'll make a motion to approve these three policies.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Leach to approve these three policies. So does anybody have any questions on these three policies? Meetings, attendance at meetings, the electronic communication, or federal financial compliance?
I had one question about the first one, about the meetings. I didn't see anything in red. Is that a new policy or did we not change anything?
Mr. Leach, which one are you asking about?
The first one says, let me go back to my policy zero, zero, six meetings. I couldn't find any changes in it, so I didn't know if it was new or if it was simply a the red, whatever the change made wasn't highlighted.
That was, there was no changes in that, except there was the mistake was there should have been a lined out section there. It was a cut and paste. The piece about remote participation of board members was removed from oh, oh, six and placed in oh, oh, six, one. So I made an error. I made the change without, I should have left in the language lined out. And then we put it in six point one. So I'm sorry about that, but deletion, it was a cut and paste.
Okay, are there any other questions on the policies that are up for approval? If not, all those in favor of approving the policies signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection. Thank you. Section eight of committee items.
Moving on to the Policy Committee, we're asking the board to accept the Policy Committee as meetings as for April thirtieth, 2020.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grimm and a second from Mrs. Custer to accept the Policy Committee meeting minutes from April thirtieth. Does anybody have any questions on those minutes? If not, a motion to, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order. I'm sorry, I'll ask. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Eight point two, the Facilities and Operations Committee met on May twelfth. I know, Mr. Lingren, you did do a report out regarding that particular meeting. Is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
I did do a report out. And I don't think I need to really recap that unless anybody really doesn't remember the kind of sad news that we had from that meeting. We talked, you know, the, the upshot of it was that we got back to, and essentially what we decided was that we were going to add one additional opportunity, one additional payment opportunity for taxes, you know, a fourth payment, if you will, to, you know, for, for taxes, real estate taxes. And we were also going to reduce the late penalty from 10% down to 5% for those taxes as well. That was our, you know, what we were going to be doing. That was the main action that we took. We recommended that to the board and we later took action on that at the board meeting the next, that night as well. So that was the the main part of that meeting that we reported on. So I think that's that's really all we have for that one. Unless anybody else would like to go into more detail on that, that was all we had. Questions, comments, worries, or concerns? All right. Very good. All right, so now we'll come to new business. We always have a few folks, we'll start with Mrs. Grimm. Mrs. Grimm usually have something for new business. Do you have anything?
I do. I just wanted to congratulate the Potsgrove Music Department. They received an award of the 2020 Best Communities for a Music Award. And this is a high honor. And it was from a non-foundation. And basically, it's for valued how we, as a school district, how we value music and how we promote music and our performance in music. And there was all these things that the application that Mrs. Hyde had to put in through the ZESWIC. And I know the administration, Daniel helped her with it. And it's a shame because this would be the time of the year that they would show recognition. But, but we'll do it in the fall. And, but it's always good news to see that our music department, through all of what we're going through right now, is still being recognized and they're still thriving. And congratulations to all. Thank you.
Not always, but sometimes from time to time. Mr. Parker, do you have some new business? Would you care to share anything with us this evening?
I'm good for tonight, thank you.
All right. Mr. Leach, you're often a contributor. Do you have anything to work for us this evening?
The only thing I wanted to contribute, I've been trying my dangest to try to get out of the little virtual thing, as you could see, hopefully, a little thing we have here to congratulate the Potsgrove High School class of 2020. I want to thank, obviously, the PSA, the High School PTSA for creating that. We always like to highlight all the different schools, all the different places that our seniors are going to be going to, whether it's military, college, every other aspect of what they're going to be going through in graduation. I always create a poster board for this to be displayed and I'll do that as well. And I'll have that sent over eventually to Dr. Zagler so he can put it out. But I wanted, I've been trying my dangest to try to get out as best I can so he could see all the different schools. And I'll do this again next board meeting.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Good.
Good.
All right. Dr. Schur, your turn.
Okay, any, any other board members or I'll be happy to jump? I didn't want to jump, jump ahead.
Just real quick, I just wanted to let you guys know that today, this morning at the meal distribution, we did have a woman, I had a woman ask me if this was the last week for it. And I said, no, no, you know, we're, we're going to continue to do it. She goes, oh, so it'll still be going on for another couple of weeks. And I said, I honestly don't know how long it's going to go on. I just know that as long as we have food, we're going to be, you know, handing it out. But no idea when it's going to end. And she, she literally almost started crying. And she said, thank you so much, you have no idea how much this means to me. And so it's just, you know, it just takes one person like that to, to make it, to know that you're making a difference. And, you know, everyone who's been involved, you're making a difference. You know, you're really helping some people out. And in this woman's case, you know, apparently really helping her out and her family. So it's just a good feeling. So thanks to everybody who's involved. It's just been the community very much appreciates it. So that's all.
If I could add on to that and ask if we can get an update on where we're at with the free meals over the summer.
Yeah, Mr. Parker, you, you may. Right now, we're still in the process of working with our vendor Chartwells. There's a couple, there's a couple pieces that that might interfere with continuing that throughout the summer. First of all, Chartwells is a, you know, is a, is a union shop. And they were, they graciously accepted the task back in March. In fact, I don't think, I don't think that they were planning on doing meals. We sort of coaxed them. And then I believe Chartwells saw what they were contributing to the community. And they stayed on and their, their team stayed on. And I, you know, there was a lot of apprehension and anxiety in the beginning. And, and obviously, everybody thus far, knock on wood, has gotten through it. And I know that that group is exhausted from the efforts they have put in through this process. So, you know, we're not sure that we can retain Chartwells for the summer. And if we can't, then that would, that would, you know, wouldn't put us in a good position at all to continue with the meals. But we're still in the process of, of talking with their local Teamsters organization about that as well as the Chartwell organization, you know, as, as a whole, to see what the status is. We're also concerned that, not concerned, but we would only have one distribution site, which would be at our most needy area, and that would be at the West Potsgrove site. So logistically, there's some pieces there. And then maintaining that support throughout the whole summer, again, at this point, it's a little bit of a concern as well. So it's a roundabout way. We have two more weeks that we're going to do meals for our community. We hope possibly, knowing more information next, at the end of this week, that we might be able to solidify that piece. And we're also concerned with, you know, the funding piece. We think we'll get funding for all this through the state or federal government, but we're not, we're not sure. So again, obviously, we wouldn't put ourselves in jeopardy. But there's many moving parts to this. We've gotten a few answers since we met last time. And we'll continue to try to, to, you know, you know, make it some type of finish finale, if you will, so our community will know. It's not, it's not for a sense that we haven't done a great effort. And, you know, Mrs. Custer, you, you know, being out there every week with Mr. Lappick and Mr. Parker and our other volunteers within administrative have done an excellent job and you've looked into those faces and there's no doubt it's helping our local community. So we'll just have to see what, what we can put together and even if it's possible over the next, probably.
Well, I appreciate that we're still looking, seeing what can be done is clearly from, you know, what we saw today. I haven't seen the final, final numbers. I think it was less people, but clearly still in need. So, you know, as long as our funding is there and we have the financial ability, you know, if we could somehow make it work for the community, for those that are needed. None of us want to see any children go hungry over the summer. So thank you for that.
Mr. Lingren, if there's not any other comments from the board, I'll, I'll move on to couple.
Actually, I did have two things. Sorry, I was waiting for.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Lappick.
Thank you. Sorry, I was waiting for Mr. Parker to finish up, so I wasn't quite sure. All right, thank you. Two questions or two things. One is that we've had a lot of, there's been a lot of comments on Facebook concerning Live Touch. And there has been, as far back as I can remember, with constant mixups, lack of customer service, poor quality, issues with touch-ups. It just seems to go on every year. And I remember last year, we brought up about, is there any way to, we, we can look into having local photographers either work together or bid on a project or something like that, but to do something locally, knowing that some do use it for the yearbooks. I understand that. But we brought this up once before. And I know that it was sort of like, okay, well, we're going to take a look at it. But obviously, it's sort of a, you know, it's a low priority. I don't, I understand that. But it's happening again with a lot of people being, you know, this content with what's happened with Live Touch. So just wondering if there is some way that we can really give a thought to this, like, about having local photographers do this and see what's involved, what money we do make off of Live Touch. You know, if there's some way we can, you know, make it, make, make our, you know, families happy. Because there's a lot of unhappy families dealing with Live Touch. So that's a, I have new business down the road type thing, just.
I will, if I can piggyback.
Members think about that. Go for it, sure.
Yeah, I would second that concern. I've had concerns for years with them. I had suggested someone, a local family that does O and J's pictures. And I think administration had asked the principals their opinions. And the only principal that had concern with Live Touch is no longer with us. So I, I would be in support of that being relooked at.
I support it also. Jim and I were both involved in the. Jim and I were both involved in the conversation that was going on on Facebook. And all kinds of people were jumping in with their stories and, you know, and I mean, I had shared that I, back when my kids were still in school, I, I stopped buying pictures after a certain point because they were so astronomically expensive for what you got. And I mean, I only, I only ended up buying senior pictures. And I don't even know if that was Life Touch. Whoever I bought it from, whoever did those senior pictures, I think I'm still getting stuff from them. You know, do you want to add this? Do you want that? Do you want this? Do you want that? Do you want the mug? Do you want the poster? Do you want? I was like, stop. I bought the pictures. I have enough of them. Go away. Stop inundating me with, you know, more money I can spend for your, with your company. I would love to see somebody else benefit from that, especially if it was a local photographer or photographers. You know, it has to be more than, more than one. I think it would be fantastic to keep it within the, the area rather than going with a big giant corporation that, that really has no follow-through when there's an issue. So anyway, that's it.
That was my first. Okay, Jack, sorry.
Oh, okay. Just an aside, our church did Life Touch for years. And we went to another, there are several competing firms. We went to another firm and wound up being happier with them than with Life Touch. So I don't have any experience with them in the high school setting, but I have experience with them and I can, I can sympathize with the concerns that were expressed that I heard here.
Well, that, that was the one thing I wanted to bring up.
This to go away again and wait till next year.
The other thing I wanted to bring up.
Follow up on that before you move on.
We received an email. Sure.
Sorry, there's a bad delay tonight.
I was just.
No, the delay, I, maybe it's just my line, but I feel like I'm, I'm stepping on people. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, if we could have some follow-up to this in the future or, you know, for a future meeting or something.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing that I always, I always caution.
Dr. Shirk, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, like you said, there's a bit of a lag and I, go ahead, please, you finish and I'll go after you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. The only thing I always caution the board is that when, when we, when we comment or when we get information from Facebook, it's definitely a tool. But I would want those, 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 those parents who aren't happy with a product, no matter what it is, if they would go to that building administrator so that when I have the ability to go to the administrator, then we can get, we can get feedback, we can get the real, real data pieces. Because a lot of things that Life Touch does for us on a yearly basis, I'm not saying they can't be replicated, but I know that we do a lot of specific things with life shops through our high school and middle school and our elementary programs. So if this is, you know, I want, I want, the first question, and I will ask this tomorrow to our, to our principals is, what kind of feedback have you gotten from the parents over the year from, from Life, Life Touch? And what are those particular patterns? We can surely, we can surely go back and look at, you know, open it up again, you know, forbid and have presentations. I just think about, you know, what this new school year will bring. And I'm not sure what kind of time that would be for our building administrators. But I wrote down, I mean, there's, there's four bedrooms right now, four, four, four board members that are interested in this. But that has been a local decision of our building principals. So if that's going to change, if that piece is going to change, then then I, then we just need time to make that change and build that into our, our summer schedule.
Dr. Shirk, you mentioned, you know, had they gone to administration? Sorry. You're asking if they've gone to administration about these issues. From what people were saying, it was, it was issues with customer service and and them spending literally hours trying to get these problems taken care of. I'm pretty sure once they're done, they're so frustrated, they get off the phone. The last thing they want to do is, you know, send out an email or something to, you know, it's one of those, you're, you're just like, oh, my God, I cannot believe me, you know, it took me so long to get this one little problem fixed. I'm done, you know, walk away, you're irritated, you know. You're just done with the whole thing. So the principals not, might not be hearing about it. And often too, it's an after the fact kind of thing. You know, it's when they finally receive the pictures and they receive the wrong ones. Or, you know, they were overcharged or something like that. So those are just the stories that people were telling. So it's quite possible the principals have not heard about it because by the time they're done, they might have it resolved. They're, they're so frustrated, they just want to be done with it, you know.
Understood. And I would just say, while I agree it's an issue, it's been an ongoing issue with everything that needs to be done this summer. While there might be four of us that spoke up here about it. Personally, I don't, you know, I don't think it certainly shouldn't be on the top of your priority list for this summer.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Parker. We'll, I'll have this discussion with our building principals next week.
Could I bring up the second thing I would like to bring up?
I'm sorry, yes, please, please do, Mr. Lappick.
Oh, all right. This is going to be a very big lag this evening. So we received a letter the other week about the, our student board rep, Madison Palmer, participating in the town hall with the Public Citizens for Children and Youth. And I was just wondering if maybe she could tell us a little bit more about that. It sounded like she made an impact at the meeting and just sort of like to learn a bit more about it firsthand. So sue me, she's still watching the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm here. So about two weeks ago, I had the privilege to attend Montgomery Town Hall meeting to represent Pots Grove. Here, there was a discussion between students within the Montgomery County about funding and budgeting within their specific school district, which varies. During the meeting, I had the chance to ask the Congresswoman, Dean and legislators a question. Many of the students asked like what if questions regarding extracurriculars for next year and the upcoming year. And clearly, no one knows what's going to happen. So they were all just trying to find a way out of that. So I asked them the question, what connections and events were you involved in that has most impacted you today? And many replied with music, different sports they've done, reading, writing. And all of them did respond to me, which was very nice to hear feedback from all of them. This question was posed to them so that they could put them, put themselves in our shoes for a minute and just look at our perspective on things we're worried about. Oh, is the music program still going to be there? Are these clubs going to be there? Because everybody has their own outlet. So I think when the legislators and even the Congresswoman have put themselves in our shoes and they're like, oh, my word, I see where they're coming from now. It was just different than a what if question. But this was definitely a really great experience and would love to attend it again under a different circumstance, of course.
Well, thank you very much for being there and, and for being who you are. So we appreciate it very much. Well done.
Of course, thank you.
Very nice. Thanks, Jim. All right. I think that's everything unless I've missed anybody. We haven't heard from Scott. We haven't heard from Dr. Nipper. Anybody else that would like to chime in? Is McIntyre? Anybody else?
I have no new business.
Okay, we'll try, we'll try you again there, Dr. Shirk.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. I just, I just wanted to take, take time and actually I did, I did want to bring to the attention of board Madison Palmer and her contribution. So Jim, thank you for bringing that up. I just wanted to let the board know that, you know, myself and Dr. Harney and, you know, Dave Nestor and all of our directors have been constantly working on, on the what ifs and the next scenarios. And I just, there's such a magnitude that with this. And we just, our goal is to be thoughtful. And I honestly keep things at times close to me because in, in this ever-changing world, as soon as I put something out or I give some direction to my, to my leadership team, we could go total, down a totally different path. And I think one of the things that I feel that we've done a really good job with is being patient throughout this whole COVID period. And I just want to let the board know that, you know, on a daily basis, the rules of this game change. That what, what we started out with, what red means and what yellow means and what's green is going to mean, constantly changing. So I just want to let you know that we're, and I, you know, I'm going to say a lot, but let you know that we are, are thinking about the future. We're going to, we're going to be meeting, you know, within the week with the district office leadership team about recommendations for the start of the school year and anticipate what that might look like as we, as we move forward. I mean, we, we will anticipate an opening where we're all back. We will anticipate an opening where we might be virtual. And we will anticipate an opening where we might have to split schedules or split between a virtual and a face-to-face. You know, we have to live in a world that, do we recommend to our constituents that we encourage mask wear or recommend mask wear? Do we, do we, we have to do the best we can with social distancing? How about if we can't follow all the rules with social distancing? How do we minimize our hallway action? How do we clean and disinfect on a, on an hourly or minute-by-minute basis? And one thing that Mr. Lindgren has said, and, and I have used on many occasions is, the money needed to match this model doesn't exist. It's, it's too much money for us to, to have multiple bus runs, tens of thousands of, of wipes, social distancing in our classrooms. What do we do with our high-risk students, our high-risk faculty? The county said last week that they're in a position to have a company out of Montgomery County to have over 750,000 tests ready to go when the school year starts. But we don't know that to be, to be true. And, and as far as that piece goes. Do we ask, you know, will parents want to, to have their kids come to school on a face-to-face? Will parents want a virtual platform? There are just so many pieces to this. Are we going to use apps to find out, you know, help with the tracing part of this, this piece? You know, what do we do with our K1 groups or our K2 groups, our 3-5? What kind of, you know, pieces do we do with our encore teachers? There's just so many pieces for us to continue to think about. How do we put forth the seamless content that is needed? We talked earlier tonight about professional development and using a platform that's consistent and true throughout our, our, our K12 world. So I just wanted to let the board know that, that we've, we've thought about a lot of different pieces and what it's going to take to reopen. And there's a lot of different models. And at the end of the day, my goal within the next week is to get a survey out to our community to get a feel for what they're thinking about in the fall of 2020, what they would feel comfortable doing when it comes to our busing and any other transportation, what they're comfortable doing, being face-to-face, and what are their thoughts on the virtual world? We know we have to step up our game when it comes to the virtual world and have synchronous learning. We know that we just can't post assignments. We know that we have to go face-to-face, you know, on a daily or, you know, bi-weekly basis with our students. We have to have extended office hours. And we have to do all this with, within the confines of our district and our constraints that we might have, you know, before us. So we're thinking about budget, we're thinking about busing, we're thinking about our special ed. We're thinking about the technology pieces, we're thinking about hotspots, we're thinking about how we deliver our customer service pieces all along the way. We mentioned earlier in the day about, you know, BVA. We also mentioned about, you know, Pots Grove having a virtual academy. It's going to be our virtual academy, not a BVA or not an Angor, but it's going to be something that we're going to put together. But, and, and all in all, you know, we're going to, we're going to get back to some fundamental basics that we're going to ask, you know, our families and our kids to, to be conscious of hygiene, hand washing, using of hand sanitizers, stay home when you're sick for staff and students. We're going to have to have some type of triage set up, whether we, what, either it's when we enter the building or when we feel sick. So it's just a massive undertaking. And we just have to take it step by step. I do feel that we're positioned to get it done. And as I mentioned, the reset button for the summer is going to start a lot earlier. It's not going to, it's not going to be a reset in mid-July. It's going to be a reset that, within the next couple of days and weeks before we even dismiss. And we know that we will bring all of our constituents together and our, our teachers along, along the way. One thing we've done that we're just not quite ready for is that I'll make, make the pitch and the presentation to our leadership. We'll have that conversation. Our leadership will talk to our, our building principals. And our building principals will then take that back out to their staffs as we, as we move this thing forward. I'm going to visit with all the, with all the buildings, year-end meeting here in the next two weeks to give them an update of what's, what, what the current status is. And we just continue to, you know, listen and learn and make those real-time decisions to the best of our ability. So I know I said a lot, there is a lot, but know that you have a good team working for you and with you. And we've, we've appreciated all your support. And I just wish that, you know, you know, I go back to Mr. Lindgren's words. If, if the model, you know, if they gave us the money to match the model, then we, we could do some, you know, there'd be a different story. But we have to work, work within the confines of what we have and what our constituents and our families are willing, are willing to do. So I'll stop there. I might have some of your answers. But I'll be happy to, to answer anything you might have under all these.
Okay, so first I'll just open it up again. Does anybody on the board have any? Sorry, go ahead. Dr. Shirk, did you have anything you want to add? No. Okay, starting, just going around the board, I'll start with Mr. Hutt. Do you have anything you wanted to ask or say in regards to the cause Dr. Shirk just made?
Just about the survey. You said that it's going out next week. Did?
Yeah.
You compile those questions yet? Might want to take a look at it. Can we see it?
Honestly, honestly, yeah, honestly, Scott, I mean, I'm really concerned about getting, getting it out there. I mean, it's going to have to be, I really, I'm keeping it close. I mean, obviously, I got about three people working on it with myself. I mean, yeah, you can see it. I got, I'm going to trust that you keep it, you keep it tight. I'm going to trust all of our board members because I don't, I don't want anything getting out until we, until the community has a same chance to, to look in and think. I mean, yeah, you can see it. I'm going to trust that you keep it, you keep it tight. I'm going to trust all of our board members because I don't, I don't want anything getting out until we, till the, the community has a same chance to look into, think about it.
I'll put it under lock and key.
That'll work.
Okay. Ms. McIntyre, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I don't. Thank you.
Certainly. Dr. Nipper, do you have any questions?
No, I, I think we're doing, we're feeling our way blindfolded through a dark room with lots of sharp knives out there. But I think we're doing a good job. Teachers have done an amazing job of learning how to do this stuff. So I think, I think we're, we're in good hands.
Okay, very good. Mr. Lappic, any questions from you, sir?
Nope, I'm pretty good. I'd be curious to see that survey as well. But no, right now, I'm good. Thank you.
For information purpose. Very good. Mr. Parker, questions from you, sir?
I know questions, just a thank you to Dr. Sherk. Clearly, they're putting a lot of thought into all the possibilities. So looking forward to, you know, this being an abnormal summer with a lot of communication and, and having Plan A, B, and C ready to go for the kids in September. So thank you for all the hard work, everybody.
Yeah, lots of questions. And coming around the horn, Mrs. Custer, questions from you, ma'am?
No, I think I'm all good.
Okay, Mrs. Grimm?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, and to Mr. Leach, our vice president, sir, questions from you?
The only question I had was, has there any discussion with other schools or even a thought possibly of starting earlier rather than going the normal schedule as we have?
Mr. Leach, there have been school district in our area talking about it, but nobody has made that commitment as of May 26th. So that might be one of those decisions that we would make in the next two to four to six weeks if we felt that that was of an advantage for us. But right now, no one in Montgomery County, other than the conversation, has, has made that, that commitment to start earlier.
Okay, because I, obviously I know we have to rely on a lot of other factors with Western Center, the other three schools and such like that.
Well, as Dr. Sherk says, we have been looking at lots of different options. I've been following along with great interest as to what we're going to be doing. I've been thinking about where we're, where we're going and watching the planning, watching where we're going. What are the options that we can do? Dr. Sherk is leading the, the planning on, on our district side, but I've been watching from the sidelines, as it were, to think about what is our response going to be and then trying to think ahead so that I have an idea of what, what we might do, what our response might be as a board, because at the end of the day, it's our responsibility as taxpayers and as the board to figure out how we're going to, how, how do we pay for this? What is our financial response to it? How do we do this? And when I heard about the PDE's plan that they were talking about going ahead and opening the board, opening the schools in the fall, I was kind of happy about that. I was, I thought that was a good idea. I thought, I thought it was overdue. Then when I heard they were going to open the schools with social distancing, I said, well, that's the worst of all possible answers. Because that, that doesn't work. As, as Dr. Sherk said, the, the funding model that we have, which already doesn't work for our district, is now even worse. Because social distancing means instead of having 30 kids or 25 kids in a classroom, we have 10 in a classroom. But at the end of the day, in the high school, I still have 1,000 kids trying to get from one end of the building to the other end of the building in four minutes. How do you do that with social distancing? It doesn't make any sense. Or I only have 300 kids in the building because I've only got to put a third of the kids, but I've got to have, you know, school bus runs, all of those things, all of those logistics. I mean, maybe it sounds great in Harrisburg, but it doesn't work. It doesn't work. So those are the kinds of things that Dr. Sherk is thinking about, that Dr. Harney is thinking about, our leadership team is thinking about. And those are the things that I and the rest of the board are thinking about, and so are many of you as well at home thinking about. I will tell you, and this is my opinion, not as president of the board, this is my opinion as a taxpayer, my opinion as a parent, my opinion as a member of this community. My opinion is that we ought to open the district auto, open the schools face-to-face with no social distancing. That's based on the fact and that's based on the science of who's getting this disease and who's not getting this disease and what the results are. I'm going to give you one anecdotal bit of information that you can use and think about and look it up and compare it with the other facts because it is representative. It is a microcosm. It is one small example that you can compare to all the known facts all across the world and it bears out repeatedly over and over and over again. Everybody heard about the USS Theodore Roosevelt, CVN 71, which was the aircraft carrier that went into dock at Guam because there was an outbreak of the disease there, where they said there were so many sailors that had the disease, it couldn't, it couldn't be operational anymore. It pulled into port. In the end, they said that there was a large number of sailors that got the disease. A carrier out sea has about 4,800 sailors on it. When it was all said and done, 23% of the sailors had the disease. Basically 28 or 23% of the sailors, which is 1,100, I think 23, 1,123 sailors were tested positive for the disease. Of those 1,123 sailors, 7, 07, actually ended up being hospitalized. Of those seven, one, one sailor died. 4,800 sailors, one died. Statistically, that is basically what's been happening in that age group of 24 and younger. They're tending not to get the disease very much. The supercarriers, the super spreaders, all of that stuff has been well overblown. Now, I understand the arguments have been made over and over again. We don't want to spread it to the grandparents. We don't want to spread it to, you know, people that are at risk. No, neither do I. That's who should have been quarantined in the first place, people at risk, people who have compromised immune systems. People that are at risk should have been quarantined in the first place. And if and when we open our schools, those people will continue to be protected. We do not, we do not, and we will not expect those people to be coming back to school when we open. We will have those people will be staying home regardless of whether we're open with social distancing, without social distancing, whatever we do. Those people, we will take care of those people because that's what we do when we're responsible, when we're adults, when we make good sense based on science. This is what science tells us to do. This is what compassion tells us to do. This is what leadership tells us to do. It's not hard if you think the problem through logically and don't let fear drive you. We will get through this. You've heard over and over again, and if you've watched, as I have watched, our leadership team make these decisions since March through now. They have approached this very logically, very calmly. They've made good decisions. They've made good plans. They've talked it through. They've kept you informed. And they've made it so that it's clear, it's transparent, and it's made sense. There hasn't been anything, I don't think anybody can say that's taken you by surprise. There have been any decisions that have been illogical. There have not been any decisions that haven't been defensible, that have been bad decisions. I've been very, very pleased and proud of the decisions our administration has taken. We're going to continue to support them as they do this. And we as a board are going to continue to provide oversight. We're going to continue to have discussions. You heard basically the members of the board, when they heard about the survey, they want to look at it. We're not going to control it. We're not going to, you know, micromanage. We're not going to tell them what to say. We just want to look at it. We want to make sure that, you know, some of the questions are, you know, we're looking at all the stuff that we need to look at. It's just oversight. We're just trying to do our job for you, the public, to make sure that we're covering all the bases in a responsible way, making sure that the money is spent well, making sure that we're doing the best that we can for our students, for our teachers, for our community. And that's that. So there's a couple of questions here. I wanted to see about those real quick.
Mr. Lindgren?
Yes, please, Dr. Sherk.
As you, as you look at those questions, I just, I just wanted to just add two more things really to new business and I appreciate your thoughts. And, you know, as, as, as we go through this piece, one of the things that we discussed and I, is it's a little off-topic because I want to come back to the budget piece regarding this, this COVID process as well. But we did, we did talk about at a meeting last time regarding signage for our district phase one. And I just wanted to, just to remind the board that I'd like to bring that to an action item on the ninth. And I just wanted to know if everybody was okay with, with that as a, as a motion and an action item. We, I think in theory, we all agreed to that piece last time. And I apologize, it didn't get, get on this time, but I didn't want the board to forget it when they saw, saw that come up. So I just wanted to get a feel from the board if I could.
I'm in favor.
Good with the name?
Same here.
Same.
And here.
Yes. I'm in favor, just not for the timing. I'm not going to vote for signage at this time. But that's just me personally.
Thank you all for your feedback on that. We'll have that as an action item next time. And finally, I just, I just, I just wanted to have Dave Nestor really weigh in on some news regarding our, our homestead exemption. As you know, the board has committed to a 0% tax increase. Obviously, as a district administration, we have committed to that. And there's a few pieces that I think that have unraveled. I don't know if that's a fair, fair, fair statement, Dave, but some new developments have occurred regarding the homestead exemption. And I wanted the board at least to hear, hear those pieces moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Sherk. First off, I want to say this isn't ingrained in stone yet, but this is what we're hearing as we go through. The, the homestead exemption concept came about as part of Act 1 of 2006. And it was how the gaming funds were allocated to school districts. So it, for the first couple of years, we got nothing. And then in 2008, '09, we started getting our first distributions of property tax relief funding, which turns into the homestead exemption. At that point in time, we got about a million and a half dollars. And that money has stayed relatively constant throughout the last 12 years. Regardless of whether we went through a recession in the housing market, due to the housing market or new casinos opened in the state or whatever, the amount stayed relatively stable. And how the process works is on April, around April 15th of each year, the budget, Commonwealth Budget Secretary certifies the amount that is available for distribution to school districts in the form of property tax relief. That happened on April 15th and we were notified on May 1st that the state had $621 million in the property tax relief account, which would be available for distribution to school districts. As a result of that, we did our calculations. The state PD gave us our allocation. We did our calculations. And that would amount to approximately a $299 tax relief for the, every homestead owner in, in Pots Grove School District. Last week, we were notified by PDE that the Commonwealth Budget Secretary in the process of recertifying the amount available for property tax relief. And it was very nebulous. We didn't hear much about it, but over the weekend, we, we started to hear more. And what we're hearing is that they made some sort of error or not that may reduce the amount by as much as $300 million. If that were to happen for us, that would take about $770,000 of property taxpayers' money. About $150 per home. It would be a tax increase, even though we're at a zero. We're trying to find out how this could happen. I, I have a hard time believing there could be a $300, $300 million calculation error. But I'm being silly, I guess. So what we're saying is that even though we may have done everything we could to say, keep the tax rate at zero, every homeowner in, in Pots Grove could be facing a $150 increase in their taxes this year.
Well, well said, Dave. Every time, every time I hear it, it becomes clearer. And it also, every time I hear it, it upsets me to the point where, you know, our business office team as well as our, you know, district has made sacrifices in the last three months as well as our school board who has put us, you know, given us the leeway, if you will, to make decisions to get to this point. This is something the PDE made a mistake on. Is that correct?
That's what we're hearing. I haven't heard anything formal coming out of, out of Harrisburg. We're getting that from our, our contacts at PASBO, that that's what they're saying to them.
Thank you, Dave.
So that's something that we have no control over, correct? That's, that's money that they're just not, that each taxpayer is not going to basically get deducted from their taxes.
Correct. We get an allocation and we divvy that up among the homesteads and farmsteads in our, in our district on a per-unit basis. So if we have half of that available to us, then basically a taxpayer has to pay the other half.
So does changing our budget affect that at all? Anything we decide or do affect what you're saying for the taxpayer?
The only thing we could do is reduce taxes below their current level. And then we'd be incurring the loss instead of the taxpayer. But they would still get the same amount of a homestead exemption.
And Dave, we might And, and Dave, we might find out more tomorrow. I mean,
Correct. Uh, everything, what we're hearing is, eh, even a budget is possible by June 1st at this point in time. So, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll hear more soon. Uh, there was supposed to be a lot of conversation going on in Harrisburg today, but I didn't, I didn't get any updates late in the afternoon like I thought I might. So, uh, yeah, this is, uh, this is moving fast and it's going to be a day by day or hour by hour, uh, update.
That's, that's all I have, Mr. Lindgren.
Well, that's quite enough. Thank you very much, sir. I'll just put my betting, betting hat on and I will, I will just kind of prepare you all and say that I don't think that's the end of the bad news. By virtue of the fact that we have remained locked down, um, in, in this state, um, I, I understand that the governor opened up the middle of the state somewhat, um, with the yellow zones and whatever. That's, well, um, we don't, we don't make money in the middle of the state. That's not where you generate your revenues. I'm sorry. You generate revenues some, you know, to some extent in Pittsburgh and you generate revenues in Philadelphia. As long as those are locked down, you're not generating revenues. Uh, and so the budget hole for this year is going to continue to grow until you open up those two areas. So what we're going to do with the budget and what we're going to do with revenue for this year for the state of Pennsylvania is going to continue to be a disaster. So the bad news is not over for our budget and for the subsidies for next year. So we're just going to have to wait and see what the bad news really is until the budget is passed for, for this year. Um, so right now we're looking at $150 for households. We'll have to wait and see what the real bad news is once the budget's passed and once the subsidies are decided on. So I don't know if you're holding that in abance there, Mr. Nestor, or, um, if you, if you want to just weigh in on what I just said and tell me if I'm way off base or if you think that's true.
We, we actually got some, some positive feelings today from our, uh, legislative liaisons. They think at this point that, um, subsidies will be flat funded. The major subsidies that is basically in special ed. They think that we will be able to retain the CARESAC money and use that for our own purposes. So that's about as good as we could have expected there. Um, there is another bill on the House floor. Uh, I think it's Bill 2460, which has some, some support, uh, which would extend the discount period, uh, for property taxes by a month and eliminate penalties through, uh, December 31st. That has a chance of passing, but may, may or may not. But, but things, things, uh, today, with the exception of the, uh, um, the property tax relief issue, uh, seem to be relatively positive.
All right. I hope that you're right and I hope that I'm wrong. I really do. So we'll see. And at this time, I'm, I'm hoping and praying that we're done with new business. Does anybody else have anything they would like to bring up else under new business? If not, we can go to public comment. This is messing. I do appreciate your comments. We've gotten your four comments through the night. Do you feel as though they've, your, your comments have been adequately addressed through the evening? Okay. Good. Thanks. Appreciate that. Very good. Uh, anybody else? If not, I think a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Still moved.
Moved.
Very good. Uh, Dr. Nipper, you're in late. So we got a, a motion for Mrs. Grimm and who do we have a second from?
Tina.
Tina, okay. A motion to adjourn from Mrs. Grimm and a second from Mrs. McIntyre. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So without objection, thank you, everybody, and please have a good evening.
All right. See you.